I'll have the Community College Board Trustees. At this time, I'll recognize Dr. Heinrich and let him go over our items.
Great, very good, thank you very much. We have seven items for the work session and then we have a panel that's going to join us toward the -- unless we've covered those seven items that I think you'll enjoy. But the first item is coming from our workforce area and it's an allocation specifically related to certification initiatives in Koffler. We'll discuss that briefly.
These proposed grant awards come up through the regional councils, the Workforce Council throughout the state, and then they are ranked by those councils. Then they pass through what we call a proposal review committee, which is composed of members of those councils, and they're ranked based upon their importance to business and industry, all the way up to the Alabama Workforce Training Council, which is chaired by the chancellor and is composed of various workforce development business groups and workforce development provider groups from around the state. So there is a significant vetting process for all of these proposed grants. These are just a few of the grants that we actually award to the colleges around the state, but these are the ones that require board approval. As I travel around to the colleges that I had as a goal to do when I came here recently, I hear over and over how important these awards are to the colleges of workforce development, career and technical program. If there will be some additional grants made which do not require the board's approval as we begin the new fiscal year in a few days, and we would certainly be happy to provide you with a listing of those, but it will not be necessary to come back before you with them, but we do want you to be aware of them, that these are just a few that come from a particular line item in the budget. You have those there in your recommendation for action. It will be whatever your pleasure. You can go through those or just see if you have any questions or concerns that we might be able to address.
I was curious, what's the percentage of the budget? I know this is, they say a portion of the initiative's fund. What percentage of that?
It's a small portion. Let me pull together those numbers I have in here. The actual full industry certification initiative appropriation is $3,758,682. So these will only represent a minor percentage of those. There are a number of other initiatives that are included there, and there are also some earmarks within that appropriation line item for different activities in the college. And again, we will inform you when those grants are made official on October 1st as we begin the new fiscal year, what those are.
Any other questions? You may not have had opportunity to look at the question.
These are essentially like training for existing business and industry grants with a couple of exceptions. And these are to help our people address particular normally customized sorts of training issues with their employees. We do have some, like 42% of the Alabama Community Colleges that doesn't fit that criteria, but they are specialized needs that come under our training for existing business and industry.
Very good. Thanks, Tim. The next three items are from the legal area. David, if you would, walk us through those.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. The first item is for the renewal of the system-wide general liability insurance and for the renewal of the garage liability for certain of the colleges that have auto body repair programs and auto mechanic and diesel mechanic programs. We received a quote from the insurance company late yesterday, and I apologize that it's not in the action item, but the quote is broken down into two components. First, the general liability. Last year's policy amount was $144,690. This year's quote is 146,131. That's a firm quote. That's an increase of about $1,400 or about 1% from last year. However, we have on the books of the insurance company an endorsement credit from a prior year, so the net amount for this year will decrease by $4,600. So the net will be, we will be paying less for the general liability this year than we paid last year. With respect to the garage liability, we have a tentative quote from the underwriter, which is $200 less than it was last year. Last year it was $11,301. The tentative quote this year is $11,119. It's tentative because they requested additional information from us yesterday, and that amount may change, but we will certainly have a hard number before you're requesting to approve. Any questions on that one? Okay, we'll move to the next item. That is a proposed lease from Central Alabama Community College to the Salvation Army of a building that was donated to Central Alabama by the Russell Company. It's an 8,300-square-foot building. This is actually the renewal of an existing policy. The annual income will be $14,400. And the proposed lease will also include a renewal provision.
Is there a need for an indemnification clause in that lease, or is it covered some way to minimize our risk?
Well, there is a requirement for the leasing to carry liability insurance in an amount sufficient and approved by the college for liability. There's also a provision in the lease that would cover any damage to the property arising during the term of the lease from the operations of the leasing.
On that same note, what about any liability for students or anyone using the facility that are under our coverage?
It's not my understanding that there will be students at the building. This is Salvation Army.
Okay.
The last item is a proposed purchase of property, actually a vacant residential lot by Lawson State. This particular piece of property is located adjacent to the colleges Birmingham West Campus. It's the intention of the college to use this property as additional parking based on a planned expansion of the college. The purchase price of the property is $8,500. The college obtained two appraisals, one for $8,100, one came back at $9,000. There are some non-recurring costs, including the two appraisals, attorney's closing fee, title binder, and the cost of recording the deed. So the total fiscal consideration is $10,500.
Are there any structures on this property?
No, sir, it's vacant.
Okay, and we've done environmental checks to make sure we're not mobile there?
There's not been one done.
Okay. That would be my only concern, is us buying the property and running across some issues that are not known. So if you could, someone please address that and be ready to kind of give us an update if you could.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
Item five, I think you've already seen a number of these. Each of our colleges requires on a periodic basis to review and revise their mission statement. Typically, this is part of a strategic planning process, but it is a requirement of our creditors. And so with the Central Alabama Community and that revised mission statement must be approved by the board of trustees. And so what you see behind item five was the original and then the revision. And I see there were a lot of changes to it, but I can assure you a great deal of work went into towards you see. And typically, most of sort of the leadership team would be a part of this, and many, many on the campus would play a role. So I would ask you to certainly be glad to answer any questions about that, but we'll ask you to approve that, your mission statement, next month.
Does SACS provide any guidelines for these mission statements, or is this a mandate that we update them periodically?
It's a mandate. We have some basic guidelines that all of our colleges follow, but for the most part, what they want to do is on a regular basis is just make sure that the mission statement is consistent with what you're doing. Basically. Chuck, I think you need to talk to some about the facilities and infrastructure committee.
One thing that we're looking at, and again, this is in the beginning stage, this is Chuck, this is not, Chuck is a board member yet. One thing I'm looking to do, every institution is going to have different needs based on area, but the one thing that should be standard across all institutions is request for funds, whether it be through the central office or through the regional grant process. And after working through the regional grant process for years, and there are several in this room who've heard me shake my head and the marbles rattled sometimes, there's a line item in there that says equipment. I need $400,000 for equipment. What's the next question? What equipment? Where are you going to put it? Whether it's an existing building or another facility? If you're working for an architect and you're coming to say, "I need $300,000 for X," if you're working with an architect, they should furnish you quotes to justify the need for the dollars. And they should furnish you, again, this is Chuck's opinion, they should furnish you with a schematic drawing. I'm not talking about one with the landscaping and the pretty pictures and the trees out front, a 5,000-foot view looking down on how this is going to be installed and implemented at the facility. Because you as presidents and us as the board and central office are signing off on these requesting funds. And I think that's going to be something that I really am going to push forward with Tim and Jimmy and Frank and with the other committee members, Crystal and Milton, that we've talked about. So to me, there needs to be more accountability of that. If you as a president or we as a board or central office is going to approve it, we need some more detail. Say you need a welding simulator, where'd you get the price? If you're going to want portable trailer for welding, if you talk to another school to see what they bought, you know, that's already been done once, don't reinvent the wheel. We need to, and we need to hold our architects accountable, because the first meeting we had, the first thing I saw was a lot of requests for 10%. And if the scope is defined upfront on a project, you shouldn't need 10% unless you have missed something in the original design or you have scope overruns. And scope overruns are typically not approved in the project, but once you get started, you're going to want them. So I would like to see us do a better job with our forms and our documentation when we come ask for funds. And then we've got the scope defined, we've got the documents, to hold everyone accountable, including us, when we approve them. So this is what I'm going to ask the central office to do with Tim and Jimmy and Frank and everybody. Please look at these forms and come up with something that works better, more like something you see, you're not going to build a house and just give a house builder X amount of money. You're going to see a set of drawings. So same concept, but we're dealing with dollars that we're accountable for. So that's my two cents at this point. I want to be as open with you as I can, and that's why I'm saying this. It still has to be vetted by this group, the infrastructure committee, and then the board, and then working with central office, but I wanted to hear you wrapping around my head. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to working closely with you, because obviously, you've heard new notes as a huge expense for the system. I'm going to ask Preston, walk us through, walk us through, again, the outstanding bonds. We've been talking about this for some months, and I think we're to the point where it's about done.
Yes, sir. You will recall back in June, you approved an agreement with the State Board of Education concerning the bonds and the issue about the State Board of Education previously for the benefit of the community colleges. That agreement was submitted to the State Board. I attended their work session in July. They did not go to an end at their meeting in August, but instead asked them to come back to work session there where they expressed a desire to clarify something. And so we made a slight, what I would regard as a non-substantive change, but a change to the text of the agreement that was presented to you. And so I wanted to sort of go through that briefly with you to explain what was done. The specific request was from Stephanie Bell, and she was concerned that it was not clear enough that we were not creating any additional liability with the State Board of Education. And I have explained to them, as I explained to you at the time that you adopted this, that the purpose of this was to actually protect the State Board and to ensure that all obligations had been assumed by this board that had been undertaken by the State Board with respect to those bonds, and to provide for some ministerial actions that will need to take place with the board of those bonds that they will have to do, but that you will provide support for those that take place. So all that is basically what I presented to them at the work sessions. I think the board was accepting of that in the end. The change that was made was that I had some language as introductory sentence that said, "The State Board of Education agrees that its covenants with respect to additional sources of payment of the revenue bonds remain in force and effect," which is a fact. But they wanted that to remain unsaid, and from a substantive standpoint, it doesn't matter whether it's said or not, it just, it sort of is what it is. And instead, put in a provision that detailed that they had covenanted to take certain actions that this board was undertaking to provide, to take those actions in their stead, as you have done already. And that you would cover them, we ordered the writer that you would, that you would pay for any of the cost of those things that might be incurred by the State Board, and we repeat that with a little more detail. So it's a single section of the agreement that was there before. It's slightly longer and has a slightly different approach, but it covers the same territory. But I wanted to present that to you, and I'm happy to provide any details that you would like to give me. By the way, the resolution that you approved in June authorized the execution of the agreement in substantial form presented, that being with such changes as the vice president, president or president pro Tim, who was executing the document, should approve. So it's, I would regard this as being non-substantive, but obviously, that's your decision, not mine.
So what we approved back in July authorizes non-substantive changes to it?
Yes.
Is the board okay with me going ahead and signing the agreement, if that's correct, or would you like it to be on the agenda for next year?
I'm okay with it.
And there's no real time to issue here, it's totally.
You've already emailed it to me, I think you have it.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Preston.
Okay, I'm going to ask my presidential panel if you would mind up and have a seat. Let me just blather while we're moving in position, and I told a few of you about this. Periodically, I'm going to invite some of our presidents to have a dialogue with you. I'd like you to hear from them, I'd like you to hear for them to tell you a little bit about their institution, but the theme that they're going to talk about today, the kinds of things that keep them up at night, the kinds of issues that they struggle with on our university side, I just think it's important for U.S. trustees to understand that. And let me just quickly say, I see this as being critical. And so as they're speaking, if you have questions, I didn't ask them if this was okay, but I'm sure they'll be glad if you interrupt them. This really works better if it's a dialogue of sorts. So, do you want to introduce the panel to kind of take it off?
Sure, sure. I'm Herb Rydell, the president of LBW Community College, Dr. Cynthia Anthony, my neighbor at Enterprise State, Dr. Vicki Karlowix, Wallace-Hansfield, and Dr. Gary Branch, Faulkner State. Would you like me to start? Sure. I think what you all are going to find, for your information, we didn't coordinate what we're going to say, but I think what you're going to find is probably a common theme, and my guess is that budget is going to be one of the things that keeps all of us up at night. But let me give you just a very snapshot, a picture of LBW, and I hope all of you at some point will be able to come and visit our campuses. But LBW is one of the smaller colleges in our system. We have three small campuses and a center. They're all located in small towns, rural southern Alabama. Our enrollment this fall was up just a little bit from last year. We're a little over 1,700 for the whole college. Last year we were 1,600, so it's up just a little bit. We have, as all of us do, a significant university transfer component, about 2/3 of our students, and we have about 17 or 18 career technical programs, which we're very proud of. In fact, that's where most of our growth has come this year. We have a few programs that are unique to LBW. We have the only two-year forestry program. Forestry is a huge industry, especially in our part of the state. We just hired a new faculty member for that program. We have the only diesel and heavy equipment program in our part of the state, the only one between Montgomery and the Mobile-Bowlin County area. So that's very important, and that is really growing. There's a lot of demand for that. We have the only culinary program in our part of the state, which is a new program, which I'll have something to say about in a little bit. In addition, we have nursing, surgical technology, sonography, and our healthcare, emergency medical technician, and I won't list them all. One of the other things that's unique about LBW is that three years ago, we partnered with our foundation, one of our two foundations, which is a private 501(c)(3) organization, to make an investment and build student housing. And I believe it is the only student housing at our colleges that is foundation-owned. It is actually off-campus, but you wouldn't necessarily notice that, it's just beyond the border. And it's two beautiful buildings, Frank Barnes was involved in through the whole process. This is the third year that we have students in the housing, and it is currently full with a waiting list. So it's been a very successful project. It's actually an investment of endowed funds, but it was also with partnership with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, a 30-year, very attractive loan, local government-supported. So it's really a private-public partnership that's been very successful. Maybe we should do all the quick introductions before we get into the issues, or would you like me to continue? Do you want me to just? Well, I do think the budget is the one thing that I would say keeps me up at night or has kept me up. This year, as we were preparing the budget for the coming academic year, I've really had some struggles. This is the seventh budget I've had the honor of working on for LBW, and this by far has been the hardest. And the reason is, I joined the system in 2009, and before I even started, there was this thing called proration. And then before the year was over, there was another proration. And then the next year, there was a budget, and we started out with a budgeted amount at the previous year's prorated amount, and then there were two more prorations of that. And then the next year, there was another proration. And so as you can imagine, even though we've never been flush with money, we have had to cut and cut and cut, and it has been very difficult. Our employees, as you heard earlier, have not had a cost of living increase in eight years. And everyone, except one of those years, there was some inflation, and I actually totaled it up, it's sort of like compound interest. It would require 14.4% just to be even, and they've actually had a cut in their take-home pay because benefits have gone up, cost of benefits have gone up. So that affects morale, but it also affects the ability to hire people and to have a selection of people to hire. But the real difficulty this year was that we have experienced growth in some programs, like the diesel and heavy equipment program. My dean of instruction informed me and had evidence that it's really strange to try to support a program that sometimes has 50 students in a class in a shop area with one instructor. And it gets to be a safety issue. Now, we try to hire part-time instructors to help, but again, in a rural area, you don't really have that many part-time instructors to choose from, and in a highly technical area, they're hard to come by. We really have all the justification in the world to hire a second full-time faculty member. The only reason we could not do that is because we would not have been able to balance the budget. And that is what I'm worried about for that program. Three years ago, we started a culinary program. I know it's not a high-wage program, but it is a high need, and it's something that enhances the quality of life, which in turn is important to attract businesses and industries to our area, there's a great need. And it's been successful. In fact, this year, we have the highest enrollment. Well, the instructor we had left the college, and we had advertised and started to recruit a new full-time faculty member, a director for the program. I had to cut that out of the plan. I had to actually stop the hiring process because of the ongoing cuts in state funding. And we still have the program. And we still have the program. We're just limping along with several adjuncts. We have three adjunct or part-time faculty teaching that program, but without the full-time leadership, it's, it's anything but ideal. And we have several other faculty positions that we really need. So that's on the personnel side. And then, like everybody else, we have deferred maintenance. We have buildings that are 50 years old. The roofs are 50 years old. And at our MacArthur campus, two of those roofs will probably have to be replaced. We're, we're looking into a possibility of a roof restoration. The roof restoration, if we can do it, would be about $200,000 for the long shop building. But I'm afraid we might be looking at a replacement, which would be about $400,000. And we have two of those buildings. Well, it will be a stretch to do one this year, and then a budget to do another one, if that's what it takes. But that's going to prevent us from doing some other things that we need to advance the college. I really don't want to sound like I'm complaining because it has always been my personal philosophy to manage the resources that are at my disposal from my institution to the very best ability and to be a really good steward of those. But over the years of such frugality, it has really come to the point where if there are any further cuts, it's going to lead to programs being closed, people being laid off, and consequently, the services not being there for our local students. And we won't be able to provide the trained workforce that is really our mission to provide. So that's, that's, I would say, the most critical thing. There, there are some other things that perhaps are even a little easier to address, but as far as the one thing that is worrisome is continuing the excellence and enhancing the excellence with diminishing resources. Now, as I mentioned earlier, the student housing project, it didn't cost the state a cent. It was an investment of private resources leveraged through federal dollars. And it didn't actually cost the federal taxpayer anything because it's a loan that's being repaid. So that was very successful, and we've been able to make a lot of advances through collecting private money, private-public partnerships. But imagine what we could do if we, if we had the resources to move forward. Does that, does that make sense? And I know you all know this, but in our system, we, we did a economic impact study, and it's a six-to-one ration. It's a six-to-one investment. So every dollar invested pays back another $6. Let me give my colleagues a chance to...
I think you said... Thanks, students. Anything wrong with the culinary program?
And the culinary? We have about 12 students in one class, but the interesting thing is, we were approached last year by several school districts in the Luverne area, Brantley and Luverne. And we actually have about 20 students who are still in high school, and they're taking it so that they can have some credentials. By the time they graduate high school, they'll have a short certificate and can work in food industry. If they choose, they can go on and advance their education. Currently, we only have a nine-month short certificate. I'd like to increase it to a two-year program. But you know there's a lot of interest. There's an entire television channel on, you know, Food Network. So if people get into that, they don't go into it for the money, but it's almost an art form. It is an art form for them, and there's a lot of passion. But the reason I was promoting that program for our area was because Andalucia is a forward-looking city, with a lot of good things happening, a lot of development. We have good leadership in, in the community. And there's a little bit of an artistic flair, and to me, when you have art, the arts, good quality, fine dining is part of that. And we didn't really have that. So I'm also looking at building resources and building the community and providing leadership that way.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Cynthia Anthony, and as my colleague said, I do serve as interim president at Enterprise State Community College. Enterprise State is in the, in the wire grass. I have had the opportunity over the last 18 months to really learn what the wire grass is, is all about, and it's, it's an amazing area. We certainly have the, the college transfer programs. We have several of our career tech programs. But I would say that Enterprise State is most famous for our aviation programs that fall under the Alabama Aviation Center. As you all know, aviation is, is actually going through a transition right now. We voted on a couple of things this morning with my colleague and institution, Faulkner State. So we're going through some transitions and some, some realignments there. So that has certainly been something at the forefront of what I've been, been dealing with and what keeps me, keeps me awake a little bit. In addition to the budget things, I won't go through that because we have actually, I checked off my list the things that, that we had in common there. So the budget and the funding kinds of things. And when you start talking about something like aviation, certainly the, the funding issues become key in, in the success of that type of program because that, that is a very, very expensive program. So as we look to the future with aviation, I think we are positioned to do some great things in our, our state, for our institution, as well as, as other areas around the state with the aerospace and the aviation-type industries. Aside from our programs, just, just kind of providing quality programs for the students that we serve and the students that deserve to have the highest-quality programs is what has been one of my focus areas and one of the things that causes me some concern. Because when we don't have the funding that we need, we, we have to give in some places. And I'm always concerned if we're giving in the places where students deserve the most. From a student services perspective, I think we have to move from just the access to education to the success in education and beyond with the workforce development and, and whatever. And if we don't have the proper resources to do that, then we are in essence failing those people that we are put here to, to serve. Funding is at the top, but it, it touches so many of the other issues that we as educators have in the, in the state of Alabama. So I would say the quality programming to get the students from point A to point B and where they need to be in order to have a living wage and to provide for them, their, themselves and their families and to, to actually make this a better state for, for all of us comes down from that, that lack of funding and lack of resource issues. Facilities is certainly something that concerns me. When we talk about the 50-year-old buildings, Enterprise State is celebrating its 50th anniversary this year, and those buildings are 50 years old. We talk about innovative programming and trying to make sure we are providing training that our workforce needs. But if we don't have sufficient facilities, then we're unable to meet that actual demand in many instances. Frank Barnes talked to us this morning and showed us a number of instances where we had the buildings that are 50 years old and just are not commensurate with the needs of our training programs now. So we have to look at those facilities and come up with some means of, of making sure we can address those kinds of issues. Enrollment is certainly something that we have to look at. I'm so pleased and proud to hear that you all have a little bit of an increase in enrollment. At Enterprise State, unfortunately, we did, did not have an increase. It has not been a substantial downside, but anytime you have any decreases in enrollment, that, that's an area of concern because you have to look at why those decreases are there. We know that when the economy is good, many times our enrollments go down because our students are in the workforce. They're, they're in employment as opposed to preparing for employment. But I always wonder, and I do spend a lot of time thinking about what can we do to increase that enrollment and what are the precipitating factors in all of that, aside from just maybe the economy is good and people are working? Are we inviting students to our institutions by virtue of our programs, our buildings, our facilities, those kinds of offerings, the workforce initiatives that, that we are providing? So that's, that's something that I think is important, that all of us spend a lot of time. And I know my colleagues spend a lot of time thinking about how all of those pieces come together for the betterment of our individual institutions, as well as our system of institutions and, and our, our state. One of the other things for me as an interim president that, that I've really had to deal with and spend some time with is accreditation. You know, someone asked a question about the mission statement and, and accreditation. Is that just a SACS mandate? Our accreditation is a standard by which we're measured, the standard by which we live. So it's imperative that we give ample thought to SACS, COC, and accreditation and the things that are required to stay in compliance there. So for me, that has been something that I've spent a lot of time on in the last several months. And it's a continuous cycle. It doesn't matter whether you're up for your 10-year reaffirmation visit or whether it's your, your fifth-year interim report. We are constantly in the mode of accreditation, SACS, and, and making sure that our institutions remain compliant and, and remain adhering to those standards that are expected of us. So you can see, I have a lot of things that just kind of go from one place to, to the next that have really caused me concern and time and effort that has to be spent in really focusing on those things as we do a comprehensive job in leading our institutions. Not just one thing. It's, it's one thing that actually has an impact on another and another and another. And I'll be quiet and let someone else take an opportunity to...
I'm from Wallace State Community College, Hansville, affectionately referred to as Wallace-Hansville or Hansville most of the time. We have 5,400 students. We're considered a rural institution located in the city of Hansville that has about 1,500 residents. We have a beautiful 300-acre campus with 35 buildings, including three residential facilities. We have about 190 residential students on our campus. We're an Achieving the Dream institution, one of, I think, four or five in Alabama now. We're the first one to enter the Achieving the Dream Network, which is focused on institutional reform to, to achieve greater student success outcomes. We have been designated twice by the Aspen Institute as one of the top 120 community colleges in the nation based upon the quality of our student outcomes. We are regularly designated by, as one of the top 50 institutions every year for associate degree production in the health professions by Community College Week. And we've been designated number two by Southern Business Development Magazine in the southeastern region for workforce development. We have 59 associate-degree majors, 23 long certificates, and 72 short certificates in a stackable credential format. We've worked really hard to, to develop guided career pathways for our students. We have 19 health programs, a very highly-developed athletic program, a very highly-developed fine and performing arts center, and we are one of two community colleges in the nation designated as an all-styndway school. We have all-styndway pianos that we were able to acquire through private fundraising. And we just recently opened our newest building, which is a School of Nursing and a Center for Science, a state-of-the-art facility that has a replicated hospital environment with nine simulation rooms, including a surgical suite and an emergency bed. The things that keep me up at night are, I think, very, very broad ones. We've talked a bit about the budget this morning. I think, under the new Board of Trustees, I hope that the community colleges in the state of Alabama will be legitimized in the public's perception and in the perception of the legislature, especially as it, as it, as it comes to funding. We serve half of the state's population with regard to college students, but of the higher education budget, we receive about 23% of that, and the universities receive 76.9% of that. But it costs a great deal of money to fund career technical education programs. We had some visitors to our campus recently, and we toured the welding programs and the diesel technology programs and the machine tool technology program. And if we needed a machine tool technology program in one of our rural institutions, I think any of us would be hard-pressed to come up with $4 million to equip a program in, in terms of developing an infrastructure that's needed to meet the workforce demands that exist today. We talked this morning in your board meeting about compensation issues with regard to faculty. We have a graying of our career technical faculty. All of my faculty could retire today if they wanted to, and they are teaching because they love teaching. But if today I were to make an offer to a welding instructor, I would be able to offer that instructor, requiring him or her to have a bachelor's degree, I would offer that instructor $34,000 for a nine-month contract with possibility of a summer contract. We can't offer a year's contract. So the possibility of a summer contract might increase their annual pay to about $46,000. That's half of what they could earn in the workforce today. That is a very, very real issue for us, and it does concern me. I think, Linda, are you in your fourth round per welding instructor? Fourth round of, of a surge to, to staff a position that's critical to meet the workforce needs in our area? And I'll quote what my colleague Linda Young has said on many occasions, is that the money does not follow the rhetoric with regard to funding the community colleges to meet the workforce demand that exists in our state. 60% of the jobs in Alabama are at the middle-skill level, but only 47% of our workforce is trained to that level. That's a real issue when you're talking about placing people in jobs. And this past year, despite the infusion of, of resources in our K-12 institutions, our college-going rate for K-12 students this last year dropped from 57% to 54%. We monitor that annually, and it actually dropped. Now, that's for the 2014 graduating class. We graduated a lot more students in the 2015 year. We don't have that data yet, but I predict that the, the college-going rate will be lower because I think that we're graduating less-prepared students. And you might recognize that if you look at the ACT scores that were just recently released. We increased the number of students taking the ACT test in 2015 from 37,000 last year to more than 55,000 this year. So that was a 45% increase in the number of students taking the ACT test. But those meeting the benchmarks dropped from 65% to 53% in English, and it's 64% nationally. It dropped from 31% to only 23% meeting the benchmarks in mathematics. It dropped from 43% to 34% meeting the benchmark in reading. And I want to rest on that one just for a minute. In reading, the benchmark dropped from 43% last year to 34% this year. And in this year's budget for K-12, there's a $48 million allocation for the Alabama Reading Initiative and $28 million for Amity. That's $76 million to, to bring kids up to the level that they need to meet the benchmark on the ACT in reading. And the Alabama Reading Initiative has been in place for 17 years. Every one of these students have been exposed to the Alabama Reading Initiative. It's not new. But you just heard our Dr. Alford say that $3.7 million was allocated for workforce development. There is an imbalance in our state in devoting the resources that we need to connect people to jobs, and it's a real issue that we've got to address. And I spend a, a lot of time thinking about those kinds of things. We have too many working-age Alabamians who are unemployed or unemployed. There are 2.8 million working-age adults in the state of Alabama aged 18 to 64. 2 million of them have not completed college at the associate degree or higher level of. That's 72% of our working-age adults do not have an associate degree. Now, they don't all need an associate degree to be employable, but they do need some level of post- of post-secondary education beyond high school. But we have a 54% college-going rate. We have a real disconnect in the state of Alabama, and until we really address that through all areas of the educational pathway, we are not going to be successful. And when I say the educational pathway, Dr. Alford and I have conversations about this. Our educational pathways in the community colleges are primarily credit-based because our non-credit training is paid for primarily by companies under a training-for-existing business and industry model, whereas we could expand a great number of non-credit pathways if we simply had the resources to do that. The students, the potential students who are unemployed or underemployed, who could benefit from short-term non-credit training to become a tire technician from a roof tire company that could be trained in six weeks and make $10 or $12 an hour, don't have the money to pay their own way because it's non-credit programs and are not eligible for federal financial aid. That is a real gap that exists in our state. And according to MDC, they said, obviously, that our population in Alabama is flat. Who we have is who we are going to have. So in order to get the workforce that we need, we've got to address the people who are here. And the people who are here are those 46% that are not going to college, where we've got to find a way to connect them with training to help them become employable and earn a living wage. The middle-skill jobs that exist in the state of Alabama, many of them are starting salaries at $10 to $12 an hour. A middle, I mean, a living wage in Alabama is $17.56 an hour. And then lastly, and I'll close on that, is that Terry O'Vannion, years ago, published a book called The Learning College, and he talked about the shifting learning paradigm. And in that book, he spent a lot of time talking about the architecture of higher education and how the architecture of higher education had to change if we were going to improve the conditions for student success and improve the outcomes for student success. And the architecture of education refers to policies and procedures that facilitate or serve as a barrier to student success, such as developmental education. You know, are we holding students in developmental education under artificial guidelines for placing them there? So Wallace State is piloting a program, and we've had some great success with it so far, where we give students a 10-point decision zone around that cut score. Those students who foregone that 10-point placement and decided that they wanted to be placed in the next level course with support have done as well or better than their counterparts. So we're trying to eliminate those barriers to student success. General education distribution requirements have not been revisited in more than two decades. It's time to think about, are they meaningful in terms of preparing students for the workforce? All of our degree programs, for the most part, are based on seat time. Got to get 60 hours toward that degree, or 64 hours toward that degree, or 48 hours toward that certificate. Where we really need to be thinking about competency-based education. If a welder can demonstrate that they are competent after two semesters, graduate them and let them go on to the workforce. So those are the things that keep me awake at night, and I'm fairly passionate about all of those topics. And I'm very hopeful and optimistic at this point in the history of the Alabama community college system and under the leadership of our Board of Trustees that we can finally make some progress that is long overdue in addressing many of the issues that exist in our state.
I was admonished to keep my comments about Faulkner for one minute. It's a talk no longer than three or four minutes about what keeps me up at night. I think I can keep within those time constraints for you. Faulkner State is one of Alabama's original community colleges. We're celebrating our 50th anniversary this year, as is our system. Our system was created in 1965, and Faulkner State was also created in 1965. Coincidentally, that is the year I graduated from the University of Alabama, wrote, I interviewed all the people who learned and dove. I haven't offended you. In some way during football season, I consider that I've not done my job. Faulkner started out with one campus, small campus in the northern part of Baldwin County, with enrollment of about 111 students. I've served as Faulkner's president this fall for 36 years. I'm the second president of Faulkner State Community College. When I arrived at Faulkner, the enrollment was just a little more than 1,000 students. Today, our enrollment is over 5,000 students, and we've been, in recent years, counted as one of the fastest-growing community colleges in the nation. 35 years ago, Faulkner State was bankrupt. My first act there was to have a reduction in force of 13 people. Fortunately, within two years, I was able to bring 12 of those back. I fired the 14th one. He shouldn't have been there in the first place. Today, we have seven campuses in Baldwin County. If you come to Gulf Shores or Orange Beach, you will pass four of those campuses. We have the original campus, and I do not like referring to it as main campus because we consider all of our campuses equal. But if you come to Gulf Shores, go to Gulf Shores, you will pass the original campus in Baymanett. You'll know us. We've got one of the largest flagpoles and flags in the state of Alabama. If you continue on down, you will pass two of our teaching sites, very innovative sites, where, since we were not originally a community college, we started out as a junior college. We did not have technical programs up until just a few years ago when we got our mission changed. And right now, I think we've probably, in the last few years, added more workforce development, new workforce development programs than probably any of our colleges in the system. You approved three of those today on your agenda, where we are in a transition phase with enterprise. At Faulkner, we'll become the southern part of the aviation college complex, and we will be over the campus in Brookley. And we have a new campus at Faulkner Campus, our second campus in Fairhope, and it has an aviation component in that as well as other technical programs. So we've come a long ways since our creation. I told you at one time we were bankrupt. I'm happy to tell you today that even though we have historically been the second lowest-funded college in the state of Alabama, that's four-year or two-year, our FTE funding was nearly $2,000 below most institutions. Thankfully to this chancellor, our funding, he has, we've worked on a new funding formula. We can't get the funding where it should be, but under Dr. Hendrick's influence, we have been funded a little more over the last two years, recognizing our phenomenal growth and also recognizing the unique nature of some of the things that we do in Baldwin County. I might add to you that our college has had some of the largest gifts given to us by any two-year college in the state. I don't know if you're familiar with Fairhope. Some call Fairhope the Malibu of Alabama. I prefer to say Malibu is the Fairhope of Alabama. We have a downtown campus in Fairhope, 10 acres given to the college since I arrived. That college is, that campus is worth millions of dollars. And not only was that campus given to us, the buildings on that campus were given to us. We've recently constructed a new health science building there. You won't find a nicer health science building in the state of Alabama, four-year or two-year. After working with the city leaders and founders in Fairhope, I approached the good folks down in Gulf Shores, and that's how we come to have a beautiful campus in Fairhope, in Gulf Shores, Alabama. Can you imagine what 10 acres of frontage is worth on Highway 59 right before you go over that bridge? We have built two new buildings on that campus, and we have plans to build others. We have a private developer that is wanting to build housing for our students there, much like they're doing in Andalusia. We feel like that will come very soon. Originally, we were one of only two community colleges that have on-campus housing. Today, Faulkner State has nearly 600 students living on campus. That makes us unique. We have a residence hall for men and a residence hall for women. I can tell you, one of the things that keeps me up at night is in the screen. Those halls, residence halls, one I've named after the Thompson family, and we're doing about a one-and-a-half-million-dollar review of that building, and that started before my good friend Al came on the board, because I'm accused sometimes of being a sucker-upper and I've been to that. And I would like to, I'd like to take, I'd like to contribute. We did that after he was appointed, but it happened, we planned this beforehand. We have another new residence hall. It's one of the finest residence halls on any campus in the United States. And in its living room area, we have two fireplaces that has its own theater, own cooking, its own computer labs, game rooms. I invite you, and you will be our guest, I think, in February, chancellor. We're going to host you at Faulkner in Fairhope. We're proud of our campus, and we want to show you around. Things that keep me up at night, I'll tell you. When you get my age, you're afraid to go to sleep at night because you want to make sure you wake up at night. Now, I have other worries, and you can go down the line. I won't bore you with repeating those. With a multi-campus, with a multi-campus college with seven campuses, there are a lot of things to have to worry about. I mentioned our residence halls to you. In the spring of the year, with all those folks living on campus, they're called Thompson Hall here and Sunsheep Hall there. I affectionately refer to those in the spring when the saps are rising and the beautiful water oaks on our campus. I affectionately prefer those as sodom and gamal. We've done everything to build a moat down the middle of the campus. But as you know, it's hard to control human nature sometimes, particularly at that age. Again, I don't make light of my charge. I could tell you that in the last eight years, our colleges lost $8 million. Since eight years ago, it would be greater than that if the chancellor hadn't recognized the inequities in funding. While we were broke 35 years ago, we are one of the soundest financially community colleges in our system. The latest economic impact shows that for every dollar legislated to us by the Alabama Legislature, Faulkner State creates 10.8 additional dollars. We have an economic impact in Baldwin County of over $200 million. I will stop with that. I thank you for letting me. If I went beyond my five minutes, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, the gentleman that recognized the University of Alabama expanded his time as they do a lot of other things. And since they're going through such an renovation, you and I need to stop back by going through Baymanett and help him with his new school colors.
I'm always open to all the help I can get. I can promise you one of the finest meals you'll ever get. I got to tell you a funny story. Talking about you coming by. Friday afternoon, late in the afternoon, Friday's casual day at Faulkner anyway. Of course, we're in lower Alabama. We don't dress up like you folks up north do all the time anyway. So I'm sitting in my office. I'd taken the afternoon off. I was going up to the lake, and I came by to sign some things. I'm sitting in my office with my Bermuda shorts on, some flip-flops, and a T-shirt. And Ms. Brown comes in. I'm over on the computer working, and I honestly did not know who she was. She talked with one of the staff members there, and I was cordial, very cordial. But when Ms. Brown left, the lady turned to me and said, "Do you know who that was?" I said, "No." She said, "That's one of your new board members." I called Ms. Brown before she got $10 out of town and apologized to her for that.
We were having such a good conversation. We just assumed who neither one was. But I would like to also note that he was dressed in appropriate colors.
I wish y'all better luck than you had against Jackson the last week. We needed to.
Do you have any questions? And again, I thank each of you for your presentations. That's just very well done.
Could I say something quickly? When you heard, we were asked to talk about what keeps us up at night. And I don't want you to think that we're all focused on problems, whether it's budget problems. I mean, budget problems are not new for community colleges. We've always been on a very tight budget, but there are so many good things happening, innovations. I have some of the most innovative people on my campuses that are doing really world-class things, and you will find that with all of our colleges. Developmental education, I was very interested in what Hansville is doing with developmental education and the placement of students. LBW and some of the other colleges are doing something known as flipped instruction. We have an Emporium model in math and have good results with that, and we could go on and on. The lack of money is not stopping us from doing good things. And when you all, which if you've not had the opportunity lately, please come to any one of our colleges commencement, and you will see tears in the room, laughter. It is not only a success for the individual student walking across the stage, but in many, many cases, that student is the first one in his or her family to graduate from college. And I made that statement at a commencement, and afterwards, a lady came and said, "You know, I'm not only the first one to graduate college, I'm the first one to attend college, and I'm the first one to graduate from high school." And our colleges transform lives, they transform families, and they transform communities and are transforming the state as well. So there's a lot of really good things going on. I know the budget problems seem almost impossible to address. There are other things other than budget that you all can help us with, and policies and procedures and so forth. We have great leadership from the chancellor and his staff. But you will find very dedicated people working in all of our colleges. And I just want to leave you with that thought, because, you know, when we talk about, oh, you know, we don't have enough money for this, or we've been cut so much, may sound negative, but it's because we want to do the best we possibly can for our students, and we know the impact, and we know what good things are happening now. Imagine what would happen if we had just a little bit more. We would leverage that and do really good things. And I understand it's not up to you all, but you need to know where the needs are as well.
Chancellor, I can't go without saying this. I've tried to stay within my time. One of the most unique things about our colleges, unless it has changed, we're the only college in Alabama that gives direct tax support from its county. I worked with our legislative delegation and our county commissioners during my first year there because Faulkner was a bankrupt institution, and we had to house some external funding. Through that effort, we are, we are, we get a portion of a one-cent sales tax for our college. Let me tell you, this is to put in perspective how Baldwin County is growing. The first year that sales tax was in effect, and our share of that was $300,000. This year, we probably will get somewhere near $1.7 million from just that small share of that sales tax. That has allowed Faulkner State to do some things that unfortunately some of our sister institutions have not been able to do because of the funding and the lack of resources. And the citizens of Baldwin County love Faulkner, and they love public education.
Mr. Chairman, would you please not give me one more second? Mr. Chairman, would you please not give me more and more, sir?
Let me ask, if you have any other than coalition affiliation, any questions for our panel?
I don't have a question. I will try and keep my comments brief. First, thank you all for the sharing with us about your campuses and also about your passion for the community college system, and I appreciate, and I know this whole world appreciates what you do. But picking up on what Dr. Carlo had said about what a community college can do in a program with the funds that they are given and how much can be accomplished with it, this system offers a unique vehicle, and I thank systems across the nation that offer associate degrees and community college systems across the nation offer a unique vehicle for implementing and changing lives that can't be done, cannot be done by four-year institutions. And I'm asking all of you, all the presidents, all the staff, help educate this Board of Trustees on what you do and how well you do it, and how effective it is in our state, and how it impacts the lives of the citizens of our state, so we can help you obtain more funding and do your job better. Because I think we all work together. This board is a new beginning, but this board isn't going to be the magic beam. It's going to be all of us working together, and then this board bringing along no conferences that may come with an elected board or other types of boards that will help make us effective together. And I was really struck by what Dr. Brown told us at lunch today about the unique situation that this system is in at this point, and he ended it with, seize the day.
Seize the day.
It's not like this today, but over the next few years, opportunities are there. And I know you need additional funding. We need to increase salaries for the staff and for the faculty, and all those things can come together, but we've got to, the legislature believes in this new governance, and we've got to execute, and we've got to be deserving of that confidence that they've placed in us. And I know we're perfectly capable of doing that. But as we move forward, we have people that have placed a lot of trust into, in us, and I think we can execute, and maybe we'll get additional support from them. I'm looking forward to that. But thank you for this.
Thank you. Save attention. Thank you. Other questions?
Thanks. Thanks to each of you very much.
About what you used, 11 minutes.
Analytical as you are, I thought you had over your count.
Think what I would talk about. I think something about health. I don't look like I'm going to pick one minute. Thanks, everybody, for your time today and for being here, your engagement. Is there anything further that, if nothing further to be discussed, I'll, we'll be adjourned. We'll city travel together in October. Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, President. I'll see you.